Not a question and answer session? Okay. And if there are any derogatory amounts or comments made about anyone, or any kind of personal attacks on anyone, it'll end. Okay? There we go.
We, the undersigned employees at Lubeck Elementary School, request the school board to revisit the appointment for the nomination of Elodie Libby as special education teacher. All evenings. Terry Murphy, Barbara Matthews, Larry Jones, Michelle Mitchell, Dari McConnell, Margaret Casey, Catherine Morris, Debbie Bosquet, Christina Robinson, Lorraine Fitzsimmons, and Anna Street.
Who's next?
This is addressed to Mike, to you, and perhaps to the superintendent.
Speak up, please.
I have a question regarding the AOS budget. I would like to make a comment first to the board in general.
Go ahead.
There were five people from Lubeck that attended that budget meeting and for the vote, and I have to say I was disappointed that there was not one school board member there. I know we have two that voiced their opinion and represent us, but nobody showed up for that. There are only twenty-six people in the whole AOS that went to that school budget for the AOS and passed it. There were three of us, actually five from Lubeck, three of us that voted no every time on it. I think if we had better representation, and you as members for this community of the school board should have been there to understand better what's going on. The other question I have is addressed to Michael. I know you sit on the AOS board along with another person, but if you don't go, perhaps the superintendent would answer. I perused the AOS budget during, I asked many questions at that meeting, and I did not see it afterwards. I know that the AOS hires a grant writer. I did not see a salary for that person, or how is that person paid?
I can answer that question. The grant writer you are referring to is not an AOS employee. That's why that position does not appear in the AOS budget. That employee is not voted on by the AOS. That person is paid individually by the individual town's grants that that person writes. Again, the best example I can give you is the regulation for Title I-A. Four percent administrative project in Title I-A application, and that person who writes those grants for us collects that. But that person is employed directly by the individual town and is not an AOS employee, and that's why that position does not appear in the AOS budget.
The reason, Mr. Johnson, I asked that question because having attended some of the meetings, we were, I was given the impression when it was told to everybody in the audience that, well, we have a grant writer for the AOS. That's why I perceived that that person was...
Thirty seconds.
...employed. Thank you.
Next. Mr. Sartell.
What I was wondering is who is exactly the person in charge of an IEP?
Let me just capture this thought.
I just want to know, like, who's responsible for what is being met? Who is the last?
Ultimately, ultimately, an IEP team works collectively to develop a plan for a particular student. As far as, as far as who is responsible, it is a shared responsibility. But I can say administratively, the director bears more of the responsibility. However, in fairness to the special education director, they are not in the classroom implementing an IEP. So when I say it's a shared responsibility, many times in an IEP, there are expectations for the classroom teacher, there are expectations for the individual student, there could be expectations for other school employees, from, you know, biz ed to whatever the case may be. But an IEP collectively, it is a shared responsibility to implement that IEP, but administratively, the director does bear a higher level of responsibility, and that goes along with being the position that a director is just that, a director. The other thing that I would say to Mr. Sartell, and this would apply to any special education parent, there is a process in the Department of Education where if a parent feels that an IEP is not being met, there is what's called a complaint resolution process in the Department of Education. I have referred parents to that. There is a mediation process that the state will implement. They'll send a third-party mediator to the school to work with the school department and the parent if there is an issue. So there is a process for that, and I've referred parents to it in the past. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Next on public participation.
Seeing that the person in the first issue is here tonight, and I think that she is willing to give you permission to talk about this where she is here, is there a solving issue at this point right now? Does she, can she get an answer to that petition tonight?
Not in this particular forum, no.
So what would that mean? You would go into executive session, or what?
We're not discussing anything regarding personnel issues, come on.
But she is here, and I'm sure that she would like to know the answer.
It's not a personal question, it's a process question, but Kathy's question wasn't answered whether or not the board would reconsider.
I believe that that person has fulfilled every bit of educational process that she has asked to do.
Can I comment?
I have a letter that I was asked from Elodie's mentor, who can guarantee that all of the requirements for her position have been met. Am I allowed to read that?
Technically, I don't think so, Mr. Johnson. Where are we on that?
If, if the letter contains what you say it does, the letter would be commenting on employees, not, not just what their qualifications are, because somebody's certification, for example, is a public record, and occasionally I'd get requests for those, and that's fine. However, I would not recommend as a course of action reading a letter in open session simply because something could be misconstrued as a personnel matter. And whenever there's that risk, as a superintendent, I encourage this board to, to be cautious.
Can I hand the letter to the board?
Okay, so I need, I need to... So I just need to, I just need to say this. The doc, what is, what is shared in a, in a public meeting could potentially become a public document. So I usually discourage boards of reading open letters at board meetings, because if I were to stand up and just distribute copies to my board, I do believe that would be considered a public document, because we are in open session right at the moment.
But it is public document.
Could I, can I tell the copies? The chief said, the chief says, all right, well, couldn't we remake your copy?
Okay, well, I understand, I'm hearing some questions from the group, that if, if the employee says it's okay, let's play, and I'll paraphrase a little bit, you know, why, why can't it be read? The employee isn't under the same burden of confidentiality that the board is. The board, the school department as an employer, has to observe confidentiality, and we can't waive that right. The individual employee, I mean, in a, in a public format, I mean, they're not under the same burden that the board is.
She is giving the admissions office, John.
I don't believe under the law she can absolve this board of this responsibility to confidentiality. However, if you would, if you would like to make a request to the chair, can we just read it? That's up to the chair's prerogative, but we are not going to comment on it, I'm sure.
Well, I don't need you to comment, I just wanted to get public access. Am I okay to read it?
Can I accept it as a public document? Go right ahead.
From Mary Ann Lant, former mentor for Elodie Mills. She said, she says, "I apologize for not attending this meeting in person, but family obligations make it impossible. I am a certified mentor through Washington County Regional Support System for first and second year teachers that have held this position since 2008. I recently heard of Elodie's non-renewal of her teaching contract as special education teacher for kindergarten through grade eight at Lubeck Consolidated School. I also understand comments were made at the past school board meeting that Elodie is not qualified. I take exception to this, as Elodie is both certified and qualified. When she first began her career teaching at Lubeck Consolidated, she was hired under conditional certificates, as she had not completed the coursework or the praxis exams for full certification. I began mentoring her during the 2017-18 academic year, which meant I kept a close eye on her enrollment in eligible special education courses, as well as the praxis, reading, writing, and math exam, and principles of learning and teaching assessment. In January 2019, after successful completion of all state requirements, Elodie was awarded a professional certificate. In addition to the courses required, Elodie has participated in a great deal of professional development training, and has independently enrolled in classes to help her develop strategies to use with the students she serves. She is currently enrolling in graduate classes toward her master's degree. As Elodie's mentor, it was my responsibility to visit her classroom, observe, and make suggestions when needed. Elodie always had a very calm, caring attitude towards her students, and she very quickly earned their respect and trust. She used many strategies when working with her students, including visual, audio, audio, tactile, kinetic means to help them understand concepts. Elodie is a data-driven individual, probably comes from her business background, and this is extremely important in the world of special education. Not only can Elodie tell parents and regular education teachers the progress various students have made, but she is able to back this information up on paper. I hope the board members are willing to reconsider Elodie for the position of special education teacher for Lubeck Consolidated School."
Can you have a copy of that, so we can have a further discussion?
Sure.
Hey, anyone else on public comment?
Are we allowed to ask the board members questions? So I have two concerns tonight. My first concern is that Lubeck School is kind of at the end of their earth. It's very hard to get teachers to come to our school and stay, teachers that actually care about our community. And so my concern, of course, is that we have Elodie, who is a special education teacher. She's one of the first teachers that have actually came into my classroom and asked what's going on with my students. So every day, we're talking about our kids. I have not had that before. And I'm quite upset that our board has not voted to renew her contract, even though our supervisors have recommended it. Either you don't believe in your supervisor, or you have some sort of other reason for not rehiring her. So it's very concerning, because I feel like our students are going to miss out, and Elodie is an asset to our school. And if you do not renew her, who knows who we're going to get? Because there's like six or seven special ed openings at this point out there. There are not six or seven special ed teachers who are even certified in the area. Who are you going to get to move down here to Lubeck Maine to teach our students, when we have someone that lives in the community and cares about these kids, and is certified in that area, and very capable, and has done a very nice job? So I'm here in support of Elodie, as the rest of us are. My second concern is the heating issue in Lubeck. I don't understand why our heat is being turned off, and our children are cold. It's not okay. Some of our kids come from homes that don't even have heat at this time of year. And we're expecting our kids to come into an environment where they are cold and to concentrate. You're expecting us teachers, we have our heat on at home, I'm sure you have your heat on at home. We live by the ocean in a brick building. The wind blows right through it as you folks know. And I know we have heat, heating problems, I know it's expensive. But once again, our children are suffering. So I'm asking you, your board members, to reconsider Elodie, and also to think about how we're going to solve that heating problem for our students.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Sean Raely. I'm the representative from the Mean Education Association, assigned to Lubeck Elementary School. We wanted to express our support for Elodie Libby and for being retained as an educator here. One of our goals as an association is to improve and preserve the quality of public education. So I think, as you're seeing here, and will probably be here from others, Elodie is a quality educator. She has the support of her principal, her superintendent, parents, her colleagues. This is an educator that we would think you would want to retain. And as you're explaining, special ed teachers, I mean, that is a high demand and condition. It's really curious to us that she would be let go under these circumstances. So we'd like to respect the requests of the board, reconsider the contract for Elodie Libby, and reconsider this question and renew the contract.
Anyone else on the public comment?
I just have one question. Like with Debbie, Debbie has said, uh, one thing I just wanted to ask Debbie, how long this winter have our kids had to wear their coat in the classroom? I believe it's only been this week so far. Because I've heard it was before this, this fall.
We turn the heat on later in the fall, but this year we turn it on quite early. But I believe, I've correctly come wrong, I believe it's been just this week that we haven't had.
Well, your budget right now is nineteen thousand dollars over the budget designated, so there's an issue there somewhere at the deficit.
Yes.
I request a vote put on the agenda for Elodie Libby.
Anyone else on the public comment?
For the two that voted for Elodie, I believe you can add agenda items as board members. So for the two that voted for her, I would recommend that you ask the board to add it to today's agenda, so that this issue can be resolved.
Anyone else on the public comment?
I'd like to move on. I think this has been a historic issue in Lubeck School, we have a contentious board, a board that works against the teachers. Not only against, but some.
Okay, I have to stop, I have to stop you.
All right, go ahead, something.
Okay, standing, you're going down the road where you've been derogatory about the board.
Come on, just take your time. All right, that's my comment.
Thank you.
It's hard to work in that atmosphere. So what the case still?
Any other questions or any other comment on public?
I'm sure John will get that off.
Any other comments on the public section?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you ask, can you answer that question?
Excuse me?
Can you answer the question? I mean, you're leading the professional woman to be on limbo, and we are all beseeching you to add this to the agenda, to let her know which way she's going to be... She can apply, and she has several offers out there. I only think it's fair for the board to, in a professional manner, to give this woman a chance. You have a lot of people here asking you, and these people are not people that just have come off the street. So I mean, I think that, you know, you should at least give her the option.
Mike, can we add it? Can we add an executive session to the agenda?
An executive session for what?
To discuss a personnel issue.
Is that a possibility, to add an executive session to this agenda? Mr. Superintendent?
It is. There's a place where, letter E, where it says adjustments to the agenda. If we wanted to add an executive session for a personnel matter, I would just need a motion, a second, and a vote to do so.
At that time or now?
We, if it's right on the tip of our tongue right now, we can do it now, and I'll just write it in under adjustments to the agenda.
I move that we add an executive session at the end of tonight's meeting to discuss a personnel issue. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? All abstaining? So have an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss a personnel issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do believe that extensions really need to have some kind of explanation. As an elected official, you, you are really required, and I've argued with this today with an upper, but, not really argued, but I do believe that extensions need to be brought out on the floor and given.
I don't believe so, and actually, we have an affirmative for an executive session. So, that. Any other public participation?
I would just, sorry, one quick thing. The people that have spoken in favor of Elodie are all educators with a great amount of experience, myself included. I have been in Elodie's classroom, and I've watched her teach, and I've been blown away, and extremely impressed by it, and that's why I'm here tonight. So I want you to consider that the people that are speaking in favor of Elodie's position being reinstated are highly qualified educators.
Well noted. Okay, do you consider the approval of the April 25, 2019, school committee minutes as written, all with corrections recommended by the superintendent of schools? Any second on this?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Principals report.
So I was going to bring up the vote changing the date of the F-Life banquet, which you led me to believe that that is coming up, that you're setting immediately on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk about the thirty.
So I'll hold that for then.
That was it, right? Okay. Anyone from the school board have anything?
I agree.
Go ahead.
I was asked by Rachel from New York to distribute some information to the board. I got one. You got one, Erin? It's information on, uh, heating audit, an energy audit that was done for the school quite a few years ago, I think, September 13th, initiated by Rob Chacy. And it seemed particularly pertinent to look at energy conservation possibilities as we're contemplating the various possible boiler. So there's a lot of information in this. It was not done by Rob Chacy. He hired a firm to come in and look at boiler, look at the heat loss in all the, in the parts of the school. So she sent it with a letter and asked me to share it, and I think it's, it's important that we look at a deeper way of thinking of heating the school. And also, as school board member, it seems like if there are ways to use it as a teaching opportunity for students, it seems like this could be a great project. And maybe kids would not be coming up with, you know, the design, but to understand what's going on in their school and be part of the solution.
Do you have a copy of that report? It's, uh, it's in duck.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else from the school board have anything? Okay, I do, and on the same subject, there's been some changes on what's going on and so on like that. We're probably going to move stuff around on the budget and so on like that, and because what's happening with boiler installation and so on like that, and there are only two or three major companies in the state that do it, and they're pretty much booked out for the year. So we had a conversation with some legal people about this process and the whole stuff we have to take, and a lot of it is very time consuming and so on like that, with hearings and public votes and so on like that. So we have to kind of put our ducks in a row and probably get the whole situation engineered out before we can actually put a dollar figure on Elodie's public screwing. So we're probably going to be changing a few things around. One of the things that's probably going to remain in the budget is a fee for engineering, because we need to have a design in order to go for a request for fit. And the fee for engineering is going to be probably in excess of thirty thousand dollars just to have some corral plants, and a bit of, you know, alternative ways to heat the buildings and so on, so on. So I think the superintendent will talk a little bit about boiler hearings and stuff like that when we have to do so. Question is on the heat. What's going on with the heat in the morning here? Is it cold?
Heat's been turned off. It's a lot of hot in here.
Just so, just, just so...
It is hot in here, I'm like...
Just so, just so the board is aware, I fielded a call from the school. I think it was late in the morning, before lunch, and then, and there was, there was some concern about the temperature of the building. I had Sheldon, I got Sheldon to call me back, and I said Sheldon, walk down the hallway. If you think it's cold, turn it, turn it back on, and turn it off at night. And he said he'd do that. So if you're wondering, you know, what, what the strategy is, we owe twenty thousand dollars over on the fuel line. I told Eastern Plumbing and Heating not to fill the big underground tank again, simply from a financial standpoint. In the ca, in the case of the classrooms, the tanks that service the classrooms, you got a little less than half in those tanks, and I'm fine moving forward, turning them on and off based on the need. But I'm hoping that...
Sheldon gets in there, what, what time of the morning?
It is May ninth, so let's hope for the weather works.
Maybe you can turn those on in the morning or whatever, and get a little warmth in there and so on like that. There's nothing worse than going to school cold right now, so.
Yeah. That's not a place I would want to cut any money. The heat is very important. I don't want the kids cold. I certainly don't want any cost savings coming from that area, or from the other areas. They definitely should be as warm as they need to be.
Okay, just so, just so everybody, just so, just so everybody understands, if, you know, I'm, I'm fine doing that, but we're going to have to take another fuel drop. And...
Well, if you can take a fuel drop on a small tank, on the, on the two three thirties that supply the elementary side, and have them not fill the ten thousand gallon tank again.
Yep.
That's what we're going to do for the rest of the season, so.
And it's kind of likely that turning it on at five thirty, you could turn it off at nine, in the morning, you know, just to get that chill.
Well, that's, that, that's kind of what I've, what I've gotten lately with Sheldon now.
Yeah.
Especially over the weekend and so on like that. I mean, it's been really cold and windy the last couple of weeks, and so...
So am I hearing one more fill up on the elementary end?
I mean, if that's what we need to do and stuff, then we're going through the heating season, next heating season, fuel tank, so. I don't want the kids to be cold.
But I think it's important to think of this in relation to a new heating system. There, there's so much leaky, um, aspects of that building, and to just throw money out of a, into a sewer doesn't make sense. We really need to address where, where the heat is going and keep it in the building instead of heating the outside.
It's going everywhere, windows, plenum, cracks.
So we need a, you know, a five-year plan or a ten-year plan.
We need a new school, that's what we need. Okay, so. Okay, that's all I have right now. Superintendent's report.
A couple of quick items. First, I'd like to appoint Susan Aldrich as the law... First, I'd like to appoint Susan Aldrich as a long-term sub. She will be performing as an ed tech in the pre-k classroom for the remainder of the year. You've heard Mike talk about the heating system. At our last, at our last meeting, I raised the possibility of scheduling a hearing, and indeed, Mike and I did have a conference call with our attorney regarding the process of creating, engineering a system and getting out the bid and voting and so on. I have said previously that I'd like to schedule a hearing. A hearing is actually a requirement before a vote on a project of that scope, but to update this board and those remaining, the process is gonna take more time than we originally anticipated. So I have suggested in the past to have at least an informal hearing, and I've raised the possibility of May 30th as a date. But with more information coming to us from a conference call, it's a little premature to have that hearing. So what we think will transpire is that by pushing the hearing a little bit later, maybe August, maybe September, we will have more information to share with the public, and therefore, if there were any questions, we would be better able to field those. So long intro, short answer, there's not gonna be an informal hearing on the 30th, but there does have to be a hearing, a formal hearing, when we are ready. So the public will have the chance to weigh in on that. We will continue to try and gather as much information as we can, but to hold an informal hearing at the end of this month would be premature at this time. So on May 30th, there won't be an informal hearing, however, that is the second date this month that I am holding for our next school committee meeting. And Tina has informed me that that is the date that was originally proposed for a rescheduled date for the athletic banquet.
Right, so I can reschedule the athletic banquet. I'm hoping to be able to stop the mail because I have tomorrow. The reason I had to change it is it gave an opportunity for more boosters to be able to participate on the 30th, that's why it was changed, but I can change it again.
So we're going to build our school board number on the 30th?
On the 30th. And since we're talking about our next school board meeting, looking at my calendar for the month of June, Thursday, the 6th, is Shed's graduation. I must be on stage at Shed's graduation. So I am not available on the 6th, but I'm also holding June 20th, when I hope to have not only our third and final budget workshop, but also a referendum vote on the budget itself. And I communicated that date to Renee, she's got it at least in pencil on the calendar, waiting for the results of this meeting. So with that said, in order to have a budget referendum vote on our school budget on 20th, we're looking to adopt the budget on the 30th of this month at our next meeting. So when I come to the next meeting, I'm gonna have a revised budget. Your budget's been revised for tonight, I will revise it again based on the changes that Mike has suggested. We're going to essentially, but the delay in the boiler project will mean there probably won't be a need to carry the first year's payment in the upcoming budget. So by pushing that back a year, I can take the year one payment out, and that would result in some savings in taxation to the town as well. So that's kind of the direction, I think, that we're moving in, at least at the moment, but your budget will be amended accordingly for the next meeting. And if the 20th works for everybody, that's the end of my report.
So you can't come on the 6th, will we still have a meeting on the 6th? Or we can't have a meeting there? Okay. When will that put our athletic banquet?
I just need to talk to the boosters. I am assuming it would go to the 6th, but I don't know.
After graduation. Congratulations there, buddy.
Unless they wanna change it to a different weekday, if they wanna do a Tuesday or something, but I will, I'm going to wait to speak with them tomorrow. And then I'll have Kathy put it on the website, and I'll try to stop the mail sending it's changed to the 30th if it hasn't already gone.
Okay, so we have an adjustment to the agenda noted.
I have one other adjustment.
Go ahead.
With the changes to the timeframe on the boiler project, we can delete item number four under new business. It will not be necessary to move 5% from transportation into facilities maintenance because the delay in the boiler project means that we won't have to spend money from another line, and that would, that plus the contingency will certainly be enough to cover the over on the fuel line. So yes, we're still looking to activate contingency tonight, but no, we don't need to move money from one cost center to another. So we can just delete number four, that'll be great.
Okay, new business? And, go ahead.
Those old computers, did they go? They were supposed to go to the recycling center?
They have not gone to the recycling center.
Are they open for that stuff yet?
The MLTI lady came down and went through, thank you, and Marie came down, then went through the things with Kathy. There is an option to throw stuff because it isn't any good, or try to sell it maybe two or three hundred dollars, or recycle. And when I said throw, I should've said recycle.
Well, something oughta happen to it. We keep talking about it and talking about it.
Well, I think we should recycle.
We'll recycle, yeah, very good, thank you.
Okay, and a new business, to consider the first reading of the following policies, BBB, VA, school committee declared vacancy caused by absenteeism. And I'd like to thank Knighton for rewording this, reworking this whole policy. This is a first reading, so if you haven't read it, take a couple minutes and reword it. Do you have bullet points or highlights you wanna address on this?
Well, we talked the last meeting about the purpose of this policy being to encourage members to provide advanced notice rather than just asking it to be excused. So I reworded it to focus on providing advanced notice and making exceptions where advanced notice cannot be provided. And then there is an approval process in that event, and then once you get down to the two and three unknowns, absence, that are not excused, that's when the same procedures before we begin.
Like I said, this is a first reading, so, and it'll be good. Any questions on it right now? There are no questions right now, take it how you see fit. And any questions in that meeting, I'm gonna, maybe answer them, talk the policy. So if you have a motion on the first reading?
No, good, okay.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor? Yes. Consider the, a discussion on special education FERPA notification. Everyone familiar with what FERPA is?
No.
Now, Mr. Superintendent, explain FERPA.
FERPA is an acronym that's used in educational circles, and it refers to the Family Educational Right to Privacy Act. All employees, when they're hired, are trained in FERPA. Most common application is confidentiality of student records. At the last school committee meeting, I was asked to visit this issue again, and we've done that, so a couple things here this evening. You may recall from an earlier board meeting, I distributed some guidance on discipline of special education students, I'm happy to share that with you again. I asked Tina to copy from the handbook, the FERPA notification, and this specifically answers the question, how do we notify parents right now of what their rights are, and that's how we notify them. For the one that I distributed, this is not in the handbook, this is a synopsis that I was able to obtain from my legal services back in the fall. But this second one where it says pupil records, this is a photocopy from the handbook, and that is how we notify families right now.
And what are we looking to do with this tonight?
The board can correct me if I misunderstood, but I believe at the last meeting, I was asked about the possibility of crafting a type of policy where parents would be informed of what their rights are. And I indicated that I would bring these items tonight, and the last thing I would say on it, and I welcome board input, if we want to go ahead and craft a policy to that effect, because of the legalities involved, I would call up our legal services and have them craft something on our behalf, there will be an associated cost. The only other caution I would say, the reason that your notification page references FERPA, references the law, the concern is if you start listing down rights, one potato, two potato, listing them down specifically, we better list them all, because if we omit one and there's an issue, that's a flaw in your policy. So when these policies are written, I've had people say, well, what does that mean? It's written too generically. Give me a specific example. And I've tried to provide examples when issues have arisen, but the policies are written many times and they reference the law, because if you start listing things specifically, that involves some difficulty because you have to make sure you list them all. And the law is a little more fluid than that, and the only example, or the best example I can give is privacy. In the modern age of social media and so on, privacy is an expectation, but in many laws, it's not written down. So that's the example that I use whenever I highlight the difference between what's written in black and white and what the expectations are. With that said, I welcome input from my board.
Go ahead.
Question, this is, it really highlights, you know, suspensions of 10 days and, or, you know, short-term removals or anything.
Right.
And it just says suspensions, but this would apply to any discipline, that the parents have a right to call an IEP to make sure that discipline is appropriate. And right now, it's almost confusing, at least like only when there's been suspensions or 10 days or something. At any time, if you feel that the discipline is a manifestation, any discipline-
Yep.
-is a manifestation of their disability, you have the right to call an IEP meeting to have the team determine that. Right now, it might be a little confusing to some people because it's really highlighting the 10-day thing, but I think it would be a good idea to really put it in bold, you have the right at any time to call an IEP meeting if you feel the discipline is a manifestation, any discipline is a manifestation, so, so that they can, you know, have that awareness. I mean, it's just simple.
I understand what you're saying, and what I would say to that is, a parent's got the right to call an IEP at any time, and I advise parents of that effect in many, on many occasions.
Sometimes they're not quite aware of that, just to make them fully aware of this. And, you know, parents do have a responsibility for checking up on that stuff, but some, some might not know how. And, you know, it just would be, I think, good policy to really put that out there to say in bold, you have the right to challenge this, or to call an IEP meeting to say, any discipline that's happened that you feel is a manifestation can be reviewed with the IEP here.
Okay, so.
Not just suspensions. Right now, it looks like just suspensions, but really it isn't, but that's what it's reading like.
Well, and my answer to that is this, there's a different, a parent can challenge at any time. A parent can, a parent can call an IEP and a parent can say, this action is a manifestation of my child's disability, they can say that. The way the law is written, it outlines the school department's obligation. The school department can discipline a special education student, like any other student, up to 10 days. So that's why the 10-day clause is emphasized here, that's a summary from school law. You're right, the parent can challenge, the parent can call an IEP, the parent can have a difference of opinion, and they can say that behavior acts is a result of a manifestation of my child's disability, but the school department is not obligated to call a manifestation hearing until 10 days. So it'd be-
No, no, maybe-
It's a technicality, but I understand.
No, the school doesn't have to be obligated to call it, of course, it would be the parent's choice to call it, but I just would like them aware that they have that choice. That's in my, my opinion, I'm not speaking for the whole board. I would like them aware of their rights as much as possible.
Okay.
Because it does get very confusing. It's hard to understand the law sometimes, or there's so much to leap through-
That's true.
-that, you know, there's, that's a lot for especially a special needs, a parent that has special needs child, they have a lot of other stuff on their plate, they don't have a lot of time to really research, and, just, just so that they have that awareness, that they have that tool at their disposal. It isn't the school's responsibility to call the meeting, it's the parent's responsibility, but they should be aware of all their tools. We should help them as much as possible to make sure they're aware.
I agree completely with that, Stephanie. What I don't know is whether developing another policy will be, would be the way to make sure that parents knew what it is.
Oh, yeah, just add it into it, like a simple two-line in bold or something, at any time.
Okay.
You know, something very, very simple. Yeah, I don't want a whole new policy developed. I would just like maybe a two-sentence added.
If we, if we can make an addendum, I guess, to the FERPA notification that goes out in the handbook that all parents get, that all parents sign annually, would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay, we can bring that next time.
Yeah, would that be okay, Melissa?
What's the source of this?
Just an added sentence in there.
That one, yeah. That one is a synopsis prepared by our legal services back in September, that's where that came from.
You don't want more out of me?
I've got an idea.
Just gonna wait to see Kenny, talk to Kenny.
I'm capturing my thoughts right now.
Okay, so we table that for next meeting?
Yes.
And we can get some input on that, so. Okay, number three, to consider, consider activating the contingency fund.
Yep. And we've talked about the status of our fuel line in the last couple of board meetings, and you are indeed $20,000 above your fuel line. You have a $10,000 contingency. All that is required is a simple vote, but I want the board to understand that it does require a vote to activate contingency. And the reason for that is simple transparency. This is on the agenda tonight, I've talked about it before, but what's going on here is that really, I'm informing you that you are $20,000 over on your fuel line, we know it's been a long cold winter and it's been a cold spring. So to activate contingency, that $10,000 that is listed in your budget would go up against that particular cost center, facilities maintenance, and that's really what we're asking for right now.
And then what about the other 10%?
Below it, the 5%?
No.
The other 10, right.
Twenty thousand dollars over.
Because it looks like we're not going to expand the $15,500 that was budgeted for draft specifications, that's also included in the cost center. So as I'm sitting here in this chair, we're gonna pull that $15,500 through this year. That goes a long way to offsetting the 20 of the fuel. And it goes by cost center, so both the bid specs and the fuel lines are in the facilities maintenance cost center. So if you overspend one line and leave money on the other line, they balance out each other, so to speak.
Okay, do you have a motion on that, Melissa?
I move we re-activate contingency.
Second on that? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yes. Okay. To consider discussion of the, that school department, the board.
So quickly, if we look right on page one, where it says total local revenue, all the way over to the right, this particular version of the budget saves twenty-three thousand nine ninety-six and thirty-seven cents to the taxpayer. If you're wondering what has changed since the last version I showed you, we updated an employee's insurance. That employee will be going to full family coverage, or the percentage that is allowed, I should say, of full family coverage. She's had a change in her insurance status. And she's eligible for that provision under terms of your collective bargaining agreement. Also included in this budget, if we wanna look on page, page eleven, next to last page.
Mr. Johnson, if I could just say, I didn't hear you where you said that once about the teachers' upgrade insurance.
What, what page is that?
The, the teachers' insurance provisions are listed on page two.
And there was a change on the, the first square? On the last, I don't have the last budget.
And the, the change is noted in the, in the notes, not related notes, but in the, in the spreadsheet at the top right-hand corner of page two. If you're curious, you've got a teacher who's getting married. Congratulations to that person. And their insurance is changing as a result. So that's, that's what's behind that. On page eleven, as I, as I was saying, one other change, at our last meeting, this board voted to provide a retirement benefit to an employee, a law of many years. And if you're wondering how that works, the amount of money is calculated right above the contingency line on page eleven. And essentially, that person will collect that money after the next fiscal year. Obviously, we couldn't budget for it this year. We didn't know that action was gonna happen. But the board voted for that benefit and that will carry forth and be expended at the turn of the next fiscal year. So those are the two changes in your budget since last time. If you wanna go through it again, I'm certainly willing to point out the highlights. On page one, you can see that we're still planning on using a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in balance forward. And with the changes to your budget, the very bottom, the total size of your budget has now trickled up a hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. So we were showing a decrease in the overall size, but this version is up a hundred and fifty bucks, but it still passes on to savings to the taxpayer. Page two, salary and benefits for our teachers and ed techs. Those are listed here along with supply lines, technology lines, and so on. On page three, you can see your tuition cost center, secondary tuition. We've talked about this. You're expecting six fewer special education students next year. Going down from thirty-seven to thirty-one. And that's resulting in the savings of some eighty-one thousand dollars.
Page three, Melissa, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
On the second page, you have somebody that's leaving that position. So how you, how you, how are you gonna handle that?
Yep. My, my staff asked me today what I'd like to do with that. And when we have a, when we have a staff vacancy, we put a number in there for planning purposes. And I've directed my staff to put in something on step three or four of your contract. I can't guarantee that I'm gonna be able to hire somebody at entry level. But we can't budget top scale either for the same reason. You just don't know who you're gonna hire. So there's something in there. The amount of money is a projection. But we, we're obviously gonna do something with that.
Mr. Johnson, can you tell me on page three, you have tuition to the private school, Washington Academy?
Right.
And Machias High School and CCLC. How many students are you billing us for or anticipating for the nineteen-twenty year for each of those schools?
Well, on page three, under Washington Academy, we have twenty-eight current, six leaving, and five entering. We're projecting twenty-seven at WA and four at Machias High School.
I call WA and I meant only we have eight leaving. And of the five students that are graduating this year, one of them will no longer be a Quebec resident. Their family has moved. So that would not be five going to WA, that would only be four.
Well, my understanding is we have five students graduating grade eight and they're all going to WA.
But I'm saying, what I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Johnson. But what I'm also stating is that child will no longer be a responsibility of the town of Quebec because they will not be living here. So we are collecting money for them or asking the taxpayers to put in money for them. Well, we're not gonna expend it. At the AOS budget meeting, I talked about this and we have more, we have, I will bring into the next meeting what WA has told me because the figure shouldn't drop a lot more than that.
I, I have to stop you because, number one, we're going on the information that we have from our school, okay? We're not going on any information that WA has given out publicly. And I don't know why they would give out information. We just talked about FERPA. That comes under FERPA.
I understand that, Mike. All I asked was the number of students. That's public information. And I asked how many Quebec students were at WA? And they gave me freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior. And so did Machias High School. And I did not ask for names, I only asked for numbers.
So we're only going on the information that we have from our school right now? Five are going in? So...
Thank you.
That's what we budget for. On page four, you see your special education lines. This particular cost center reflects the needs of your student population as well as the recommendations of our special education director. We currently transport two students to catalyst day treatment. We know this already with those associated expenses. Trickling over onto page five, special education costs are broken up between elementary and secondary. You can see your elementary's going down and your secondary's going up. And that's because you have some students who are matriculating from grade eight to nine. Total special education cost center at the bottom of page five is up twelve thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. On page six, lines for extracurricular, co-curricular. This is the cost center where we pay our coaching stipends, non-athletic advisory stipends, officials fees, some small lines there for travel and equipment also. Student and staff support. As you know, we have a grant-funded nurse, we're grateful for that. So those expenses have been removed. Thirty-five hundred under student evaluation services, style testing that we use to inform practice. On page seven, system administration, school board stipends at the top along with lines to pay for the audit, legal services, insurance. At the bottom, under superintendent of schools, this is your AOS assessment. Again, those costs based on a percentage of resident students. Page eight, under the principal's office, you can see salary and benefits for our principal along with our secretary. Related lines for the copier lease, copier maintenance, telephone, advertising. And advertising has gone up significantly in the last couple of years. See lines for technology as well. This particular cost center altogether at the bottom of page eight is up seventy-six hundred. On page nine, transportation and buses, salary and benefits for our bus drivers. Also, I would remind the group, bus payment. In the current budget, we put in forty thousand because we were replying for a BW grant and had to have a twenty percent match. We were applying for two buses. So that forty thousand is a twenty percent match on two buses. We didn't get the grant, but we had to buy a school bus anyway. So the fifteen eight oh five is the principal for the second year's payment. And the interest rate below it, well, that's interest, as, as it says. Lines for repairs and maintenance, bus insurance, bus fuel. And this particular cost center is down thirty-two thousand two sixty-six and eighty-seven cents. On page ten, facilities maintenance. I will be revisiting this section for the next board meeting. Lines at the top, salary and benefits for our custodians along with lines in the middle for building repairs, water and sewer, rubbish, trash removal, snow plowing. What I wanna call your attention to is at the bottom. As I have reported on previous board meetings, we increased the heating fuel line based on consumption. That's gone from sixty to seventy-five. We put money in for roof repair. We're still waiting on a quote from Roofing Systems of Maine, but they have been contacted. The HVAC system, that includes a year-one payment right now. But as I've indicated earlier, because of the delay in the boiler project, I can take that additional fifty-nine five out for next year. But we still need to keep something for the architectural drawings. And those will get done, I'm very confident, either in the late summer or the fall. And we can take that sixty out for this year. Coming down the home stretch on page eleven, all other expenditures. This is your food service program, salary and benefits for our cook, lines for food, non-food. Contingency, we mentioned that tonight. That's staying the same around ten thousand. You can see the retirement provision there that was voted on at the last board meeting. When it's all said and done, your gross budget in this particular version is up a hundred and forty-nine thirty-eight. Still passing on savings to the taxpayer of almost twenty-four thousand. And that's likely to be a little more savings next time around, I think.
Mr. Johnson, on the fuel thing?
Yep.
The town votes to, on the fuel. And we anticipate that for our high school. So like last year in April, we still had, or you guys had fifteen thousand, I think.
Yep.
In the budget still for fuel.
Right.
So you're talking about, how much do you think is gonna be left in your big tank?
In the big tank?
Yeah.
Well, when I taught in Sheldon yesterday, there was less than twenty percent. Because the gauge on the big tank doesn't even register until it's twenty percent, twenty percent left.
What, what is that? What's the cost when you fill that up?
You say that was a ten-thousand gallon tank, Mike?
I believe so, yes.
Well, if we, if we take, if we take a six-thousand gallon draw, at two dollars and fifty cents a gallon, that's fifteen thousand dollars.
I, I mean, are you gonna address the town vote that? We, somebody, I don't know who, nobody will ever say still, how we heated the high school wing this year. So can we assume that a lot of that heat, this bill went for that?
I wouldn't say a lot. And, and I don't mean to mince words. And we can't pinpoint it because as Mike has reported, the heat isn't needed. Electricity is, and, and that's nice. So they, they, we, they know how much they use. And I say they, the LCOC knows how much they use and they pay their share in the electric bill. But the heat isn't needed right now. In a newer system, it could be, but it isn't right now. So of the eighty thousand dollars we spent this year, yes, I think a fair amount has gone to the LCOC and the old high school wing. But there's no way to say how much or how little because it's not, because it's not needed. I can say that we run the heat higher on the elementary side because the kids are there in the winter. But...
A lot of it has to do with, number one, the price of the oil this, this year was higher than last year. And we had more degree days this year. It was actually colder this year.
You're actually, you're twenty thousand down. You, you know, were twenty thousand over. Then you're twenty thousand to the badge because you gotta fill that. So that's forty thousand.
Oh, we, we, we haven't spent that money yet. And that would come off the next, that would come off the next budget. So when we took a fill-up this year, back in whatever it was, September or October, yeah, that's a bulk drop. There are bad years where if we have a mild winter and it look, and our budget looks great, we'll do a bulk drop like now, not knowing what the price is gonna do in the next year. But we just can't do that this year because we are over anyway. So there will be a big drop at some point. When I say drop, that's fuel going into the tank. There will be a big fuel drop into the tank at some point. But I don't dare do it right now when I'm looking at a line that's twenty thousand dollars overdrawn. So when we have a new budget with essentially new money, I'm gonna say fill it up or six thousand gallons. And there'll be a fifteen thousand dollar bill that we get in the mail in October, probably.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm on the budget committee.
Yep.
So I've had access to all of this. And I think that we have an obligation to let the town know what's up with that much money over.
Well, I, I mean, how we spend...
I mean, I hope you discuss it at our town meeting.
How, how we spend money is in the public domain. And I've reported on the fuel lines at least three or four school committee meetings. These are public meetings, anybody from the town can come in. We've had non-residents come, and, and that's fine. These are public meetings. And how we spend money is in the public domain. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that a towns person may have right before the referendum vote at our third and final budget workshop like we've done historically. There's always a question and answer period. And I'd be happy to entertain questions from any of you, anybody at that time.
I think a lot of that heat is going out through the, through the, yeah, Mike. I've heard a lot of it. But we're not gonna ask a question both of us. Well, one, hold on a second. Someone else had to hand it over. Yes, yes.
Thank you. I have a question to the superintendent or to any of the colleagues that can like you to whatever you want. The LCOC, we are spending a lot of money for heat down there. I'm gonna give a perfect example. For three weeks, myself and four other people spent every day down there tearing the books apart that they wanted to destroy so that the paper could go to the recycling. It was so hot in that room in October, we had to open the windows. We took our sweaters off. I have had people go down to the lunch that they offer for seniors and they're telling me that it's eighty-five degrees in there. I wanna know who goes down when and turns the heat on to what temperature? That's my first question. Yes, ma'am?
I believe that the, the heating system, they do all that stuff. And then one side of that, the building on the high school end is hot and one side is freezing cold. And there's no way to, to regulate.
I understand that, Melissa. I've also listened to everyone's meetings at home when I'm not publicly here. We have had people from the LCOC say exactly what you just said. The meat is cold, hot on one side and cold on the other. I'm not an engineer, but I do live with a heating person. And I ask this question, if I turn the heat in my house upstairs off and only heat downstairs, the heat is going to rise and it's going to keep rising until upstairs is warm to what the temperature downstairs is saying. So when someone, and I don't wanna use names, said at the LCOC that, well, we leave the door open so the heat goes across the hall. They are running that boiler. They're not, they're not saving us any money. I guess my other concern is, we, I was on the, the school board and on the committee that leased the LCOC that billing for one dollar. And that very first year, there were requirements. One of the requirements has never been met and, Mr. Johnson, you just mentioned it. We had told them they must sever the electric, the water, the sewer, and the heat. The heat was never severed. And for ten years now, this community has picked up that tab. The LCOC also rents space down there. We, Baby Care was paying them five hundred dollars a month to be there. They're making money. We're leasing it to them for a dollar and we're paying for the heat. And we're paying for the revenues. Can somebody answer the question?
Go ahead to comment.
In the energetic, which I read through last night, one of the things that was done was the LCOC trying to figure out as best as they could, based on square footage, based on all sorts of different factors, how much energy goes into that high school end. And I don't know for sure, but I would suspect that that's what they're basing their, their heating contribution to the school system on.
They, they gave a school three thousand dollars. It cost me more to heat my house this year with, than three thousand dollars. So the square footage down there, does, that argument doesn't make sense to me. But I also will tell you, Melissa, I read that. I was on the board when that was proposed to us. I know that Mike has read it. I'm sure some of the people that have been on that board for a while have seen that audit. But it's antiquated. If the LCOC wants it, why don't they just get monitor heaters or something for each individual room? And then when that room is being used, turn your heat up. When it's not, turn it down and close the door.
Yeah, we're gonna be working with them in the near future as far as they're getting along, what's going on down there, as far as...
Will that be a public meeting? Will that be at a public meeting? Will that be at a public meeting?
Um, initial meeting with the LCOC people and contracts and leases and stuff?
Yeah.
More than likely not.
I think it's a fact, I don't, I didn't hear my.
More than likely it won't be because of the negotiation session between, you know, putting some heads together to kind of let the best of alternatives.
So when would the public be able to find out how much we're leasing this building to them for that they are repairing and heating?
Apparently when things come to.
When you finally have a, a final figure.
Right.
Well, whoever's on that committee, I seriously recommend that you look at severing the heat. That was promised with the original, that's when the people voted to give the LCOC that, that wing of the building. That was one of the things we had requested, and it has not been done.
Well, well, I'm just, this is just for me, Melissa. I think my, what I, somebody gave them permission to turn the heat on. Now, I'm going to say it's our administration, and it's right in the contract. You know what? Our kids aren't getting heat, but they are. And I know about the difference going down that hallway on the, the high school end, one's cool and one's hot. But our kids should not have to wear coats to school.
Well, but we did hear today that.
We just addressed that issue.
The last four days.
Well, I talked.
And our kids are at the other end as well, after school program and similar.
Like, it's heated all day.
So we just addressed that issue, so.
Thank you.
Um, do we need a motion on the board, on the budget, really?
I need to make a change for a second because my child will not be going to WA, she will be going to Machias. And it says five going into WA.
Okay.
And she's not going to WA.
Okay. So we'll go with that. On that to you. Okay, do we need a motion on the budget?
No.
Yes?
No, no action tonight. Next time, yes, but not tonight.
Okay, it's seven thirteen, we're now going to enter an executive session on personnel matters. Does somebody have the paint signing sheet? Yes, yes.
Right here.
Yeah. I'm afraid I'm not going to sign this.